Okay, good for you.
Do you have an extra packet?
Did you read everything?
You read it online.
I did.
I cannot read on the computer.
I read everything online. Thank you.
You ready, Amanda? Call to order, roll call, and establish a quorum of the City of Perkins regular meeting Tuesday, December ninth, 2025.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Can you stand and pray with me? Jason's gonna run. I'm just kidding. I got it.
Okay.
You want it? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Heavenly Father, I thank you so much for this day, Lord, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. Lord, I just pray that you guide and direct each one of us with the decisions we need to make tonight and going forward. We love you, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, Jason. All right, number four, consideration and action on consent agenda. Commissioners, I'm going to make the motion that we remove item K. The city manager's report, so Mr. Ernst can talk to us.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number five, consideration discussion and possible action on items removed from the consent agenda. Mr. Ernst?
Yes.
I have seasoning.
Now, or should I go? No, let's go ahead and do it. So that motion in second was to remove that item from the consent agenda. So now we need a follow-on motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, exception of item K.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item K. Consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Now, number five, consideration discussion and possible action on items removed from the consent agenda.
So the, my report this month spoke only of the sewer line emergency that's going on, which is a line that runs east and west from the Heinz City Hall, about 500 feet to the east. It collapsed on the, near the manhole closest to City Hall, which City Hall itself doesn't feed into that line. It's bringing houses from the east and flowing to the west. So it collapsed, we were unable to get a camera through it, we could see it. So we dug it up, and the line keeps breaking as we go, kind of like old plumbing in a house. It's a concrete line. So I called in another company, Craft Reynolds, out of Oklahoma City. They ran a camera as far as they could, which was 134 feet from the east end. The line is in extremely bad shape, deteriorating, there's chunks of the pipe missing, and we believe there's another collapse in the line where we had 74 feet from where the original collapse was. So at the end of the day, to fix the two areas that are collapsed and then pipe burst is going to cost in the neighborhood of $175,000. And I'm visiting with the Water Resources Board about funding options, and then we'll determine where we go from there. And I should say, since this exceeds my spending limit, there is a provision in the code that says if there's an emergency, then, you know, I just have to do what we have to do to keep going and then bring it to you. And I'll write a letter once I have, it's, it's a, the situation is just changing and changing, and as they dig, it just seems nothing good is happening. So I should have more information maybe by close of business tomorrow.
How is this affecting?
Directly, probably 10, 10-ish. The problem is, we probably have 12,000 to 15,000 feet of this line in the ground, in the old part of Perkins, the original part. So we're going through the sanitary sewer evaluation, so we'll learn more at the end of that, but.
You say we're in the middle of that, right?
Yeah. They're, yeah, we're kind of halfway through. And then, but the biggest thing is to get this line operational, and we're able to pump from one manhole to the other. So it's, it's operational.
That's my next question.
I mean, nobody's backed up or anything. It's operational on a temporary basis until we can get the repairs done and get it bursted. And that's where they put a high density, high-density polyethylene pipe basically inside the other pipe, then they'll dig up each service and retap them.
Well, I guess we need the survey to tell us which one's priority. Sorry, I'm Chandler, I do it.
It happened.
You remember.
It just happened, so.
Got to be done.
Yep, there's nothing, there's no way around it.
Time line on getting it fixed?
Hopefully in a couple of weeks. They're working fast. The other problem is it's 15 feet down, and there's fiber optic. The gas company put a gas line directly in line with our sewer line above it, and there's foam and a couple other, and two, we found two dead gas lines so far, that they just abandoned in place. So it's kind of a what can go wrong will situation right now.
What do we do about those abandoned gas lines? Are they sealed off?
They're not now. The gas company came down, we called them, and, because there's four gas lines, and we tapped two of them. Company thought they were old, and they were. There's nothing in them. So we cut sections of them out, and we're cutting more sections out as we dig.
So we're on top of work? Okay. So our next step is to approve item K. Anybody have any more questions?
Oh, I should say, I did give you a, the handout has pictures of the pipe on the inside, where they could get into the pipe, and you could see the aggregate from the concrete is sewer gas ruins concrete, so, and they stopped using concrete sometime in the 60s, so.
So that's how old this is?
I think it's probably closer to statehood. I don't know of any other major sewer project. So that's my biggest concern, is that the original part of Perkins will be all like this.
I got nothing.
At 15 feet down.
Yeah, that's, that's a big problem, because you have shoring, and there's a lot of weight, and it's dangerous. Right Water came and helped us, a local excavator helped us last week when we started at the beginning of the week, because we thought we could take the collapsed portion out, scab a piece in, but it just, as you uncovered, it just collapses. If for some reason we have to go the whole length of the pipe, which is 500, 175,000 is based on 500 feet of pipe, it's actually, I think, closer to 525, so that will go up a little bit. If we're not able to pipe burst it, and we have to replace the whole pipe, it's going to be closer to 330, 340,000.
Good times. Good times. In the clause for the spending limit, you're, you're able to?
I'm able to do it based on an emergency and then justify it, which will happen. And in January, we'll have an agenda item to hopefully look back on this past event. It'll be passed by then, and figure the rest of it out.
So basically, this concrete is like clay.
Yeah, it's old. It's just deteriorating. It's just, it's concrete that's turning into just the rocks that are in the concrete.
Yeah, you can see it in this one picture.
Yeah.
Missing pipe. Anything else, Commissioners?
Make a motion to approve item K.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
That's Bob.
Yep.
Okay, item agenda number six, consideration discussion and possible action to accept the 2024-2025 fiscal audit report presented by Ann Cole, Conciliation Services P L L C.
Come on up. All right, thank you. City Commissioners and Mayor, I would like to present our audit for fiscal year 2025. I want to call your attention to a few things that are in the audit. First, I'd like to say that we did not encounter any difficulties during the audit. Everything that we have requested as part of the audit has been given to us by the city clerk and staff there, so there has been no difficulty performing the audit. If you'd look at page one, that is our independent auditor's report. Oh, I don't know if your packet has a report in it. Do they have the, yeah, okay, sorry, because I've sent two drafts, and this is the final draft. And in that, if you'll look at the second paragraph under opinions, that tells you that you have a clean opinion, that all of the financial statements in this report are presented fairly in all material respects, and that it is a good representation of how you're using your accounting and the modified cash basis for the reporting in your financial statements. So we found no issues with that, other than you just use modified cash basis, and that's why there's an emphasis of a matter paragraph that's down further on the page. Then if you'd like to go ahead and go to page four, that is the main financial statements that's known as the government-wide statement. So in other words, that's all your governmental activities and all your business-type activities of the city. You have a net position in the government activities of $6,544,813. You have business-type activities of $8,343,533, and a total for the whole city of $14,888,346. So that is a accurate materially stated fund, net position for your city. Then I will just call your attention to, if you go to page six, these are the actual fund statements for the governmental-type funds. These will tie to that front page for that governmental column with some reconciling items that are towards the bottom of the page to get your 6.5 million there at the bottom. And then the next page, page seven, is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, which a lot of people refer to as your income statement for your governmental funds. And that has a fund balance that will match the page in front of it for overall funds of $3,448,265. There's a reconciliation to the government-wide on page eight, and then this continues on for your proprietary funds, which are the Public Works Authority and the Industrial Development Authority or PIIT. There is also a statement of cash flow with that on page seven, showing your cash position for those two funds of $1,32,261. Then is, I don't want to go through page by page on the notes. I'm hoping that you had a chance to read through your notes. And then at the very back of the report, you will see these financial statements are a little bit different than they were last year, in that because you added a couple of funds and you have, there's been some changes with GAZB lately, there's a new pronouncement GAZB 100, new pronouncement GAZB 101. We had new funds, so we presented them in a combining statement on page 32, rather than on statements that were upfront in the financial statements like they were last year. Now, this page you may not have yet. Okay, got it. And then our internal control report is on page 34, and this is the report where we would report to you if we had any findings regarding any kind of deficiencies in internal control, or any kind of noncompliance of federal or state or local laws, and there were none. So this is a clean audit report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for sending the first draft, so I can.
No problem, happy to do that.
Thank you for coming every time to give us a report.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Commissioners, anybody? Staff? I make a motion that we accept the 2024-2025 fiscal audit report presented by Ms. Ann Cole.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Yeah, feel free to, feel free to head home. Safe trip.
Thank you all. We'll see you. Nice to meet you.
Number seven, consideration discussion and possible action to approve a general services agreement with Cowan Engineering LLC. Is that you, David?
Yes, this is the general services agreement between City and Cowan. It's the same as the ones you guys have had in place for several years. The only real change we made to it was we redefined city to include any public trusts, of which the city is the beneficiary. That gets rid of the need to have multiple agreements with them and the Public Works Authority, so this covers anything you guys need to do.
I decided that after reading the attachments, I should have been an engineer instead of a teacher.
Never too late.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, did you want to speak on anything?
Yes, I'm a financial advisor whenever you guys are ready to talk about potential loan application.
Oh, okay, okay, so different.
Item 12.
Thank you, I have them numbered, and that helps. Commissioners, anything on?
I'll make a motion to approve a general service agreement with Cowan Engineering LLC.
Second.
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number eight, consideration discussion and possible action to approve revised City of Perkins purchasing policy. Rachel?
Actually, I'm going to defer to David, if you don't mind.
That's in the book.
This is a modification to the existing purchasing policy, and what we did is we made it clear that if any trust makes purchase of real property, that is not governed solely by the purchasing policy, it's governed by the Trust and Denture and Oklahoma Public Trust Act. And we did this because we had some concerns as to the ability of a trust to actually purchase real property or not, so that's just cleaning that up.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised City of Perkins purchasing policy.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Item agenda number nine, consideration discussion and possible action to approve McGuire Iron Contractor Pay Application Number Two, the amount of $398,997.10 funded by the Oklahoma Water Resource Board American Rescue Plan Act Funds awarded for the joint Iowa Tribe of Oklahoma and the City of Perkins Water Tower Project, to acknowledge utilizing ITO funds in the amount of $199,498.55, and to approve dispersment request number one for ARPA funds awarded for the City of Perkins in the amount of $199,498.55. Why do y'all gotta make that so big?
This is a, this is essentially paying for the foundation on the water tower, which is in, and steel plate that has been delivered to the shop that they're working on. They're, I'm expecting them to be back to start summer erection work January 20th. So they were able to move it up and hopefully kick it into high gear over the next three months.
Drive by and barely see their heads poking out of the ground. You're driving, you're going, oh, I see what you're doing over there. So, yeah, it looks good, but it looks like progress.
Yep.
Commissioners, any, anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve McGuire Iron Contractor Pay Application Number Two in the amount of $398,997.10 funded by the Oklahoma Water Resource Board American Rescue Plan Act Funds awarded for the joint Iowa Tribe of Oklahoma and the City of Perkins Water Tower Project, acknowledge utilizing ITO funds in the amount of $199,498.55, and to approve the dispersment of request number one for ARPA funds awarded to the City of Perkins in the amount of $199,498.55.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number 10, consideration discussion and possible action to approve dispersment request number three, Cowan Engineering Invoice 0364 in the amount of $1,475 funded by the Oklahoma Water Resource Board American Rescue Plan Act Funds awarded to the City of Perkins and the Joint Iowa Tribe of Oklahoma and the City of Perkins Sewer Delivery Station Project.
This is to pay the Engineer for Construction Administration a portion, a portion of it. I think there'll be 10% left. This payment.
There'll be how much less?
There'll be like 3,000 left.
It's almost been.
We're almost done.
Over met you.
Yeah, almost.
Commissioners, anybody?
Make a motion to approve dispersment request number three for Cowan Engineering Invoice 0364 in the amount of $1,475.
My second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Consideration discussion and possible action to approve Resolution 33-2025, a joint resolution by and between the City Commission of the City of Perkins, the Perkins Industrial Development Authority, and the Perkins Public Works Authority adopting a grants management policy. Rachel?
Okay, so you have a grant policy, had a little introductory page for you, we just thought that this would help to streamline the grant process, establish who does what, and how grants are handled. So do you have any questions about it?
Did you write this?
I wrote some of it, and David took it. I think I read about a third, I think it started at four pages, and then it ended up at 12, so, yeah.
She handed it to a lawyer. You know, what she handed me was very good, I just added five words that I could have used too.
It's very thorough.
And it will have, the resolution, it's, it's going to be, if it's approved, will be City Commission for Public Works and Propita, so that whoever receives money is all played by the side.
It's all in the same. I like the streamlining, David.
I, I would note that there are some grants that require a policy like this in place, so this can open the door to the city for some other opportunities.
It protects us as well. And the person running the grant. Checks in the balances are good. Commissioners, anybody?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 33-2025.
That's code for him.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number 12, consideration discussion and possible action with respect to a resolution of the City of Perkins, Oklahoma, the city approving action taken by the Perkins Public Works Authority, known as the authority, including any floor amendments that may be made thereto authorizing the increase, issuance, sale, and delivery of a promissory note or notes in one or more series of the authority through the Oklahoma Water Resource Board, and the total aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5 million, ratifying and confirming a lease agreement as amended pertaining to certain water, sanitary sewer, and refuse systems, and containing other provisions related thereto.
So the goal, the purpose of this is, we've talked about needing a new water meter system, so that's, I don't know, a few years ago it was 900,000, now it's 1.2 or 3 million. And then there's also water lines for the new water tower going from the tower coming towards Casey's or Taco Bell, and then we need to tie in, basically tie in the two pressure planes. So in doing some research, there are some programs available with principal forgiveness where we could potentially get a loan, the goal would be to get a loan with a lot of principal forgiveness in it as a grant type deal. So when I was looking at how to structure all this and put this together, I talked to David, and he brought up Charles Decune, and so basically what we're trying to do is put together a package. This is like the first step, this is engaging everybody involved, so we can get real numbers and real ideas of what we're looking at to get some things done. This has nothing to do with the sewer, but it may come into it.
But it, it could, because David did a great job keeping the language broad. I don't know if you noticed, it said issuance or issuances. I was already looking at potentially three different loans to maximize the loan forgiveness, you know, if need be, and we squeeze in a little bit of sewer money. Again, the, the language is broad enough, and thank you, David, for that. That way, there's some flexibility.
Yep.
So you want me to go on? Anything else you want to mention before I explain my side of things?
So we, we are taking this a little bit backwards, because the loans themselves will be made to the Public Works Authority. You all have your city commissioner hats on right now, so you are blessing an action that then you will consider taking in the PWA meeting. That's fine, we can do it that way, I'm just clarifying what all we're doing here. But this is engaging the Baker Group, which is Mr. Decune's firm, to act as financial advisor to the authority, and engaging me separately from my city attorney of rural service bottom counsel, which OWRB requires on application. service bottom counsel, which OWRB requires on applications for loans, because these are out of a tax exempt funded pool. As Charles said, we're looking at doing three different loans, and so we've done this as broadly as we can to cover any potential opportunities that arise from OWRB. Based on the engineering estimates that we've received and discussed, we don't think the total for the three would exceed five million dollars, so that's why that number is in there. If for some reason needs to exceed that, we will bring back for additional authorization. Charles is with Baker Group. He's in their Oklahoma City Office, but prior to that, he was twelve years at OWRB?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. And he was our go-to person there for any sort of funding request applications, anything like that that we might have needed. So when Bob brought this to me, I highly encouraged him to engage Baker Group, because you do need a financial advisor to look at this, a breakdown of the financial implications and repayments for loans like this. So with that, I will let Charles take away.
Okay, so long story short, we're looking at potentially three different loans to maximize your savings. I'm gonna use the word loan forgiveness. That really means grant, but because of federal requirements, it cannot be called a grant. So we're considering loan forgiveness on automated meters and SCADA, like you mentioned, potentially one point three million. There are two pockets of money, one with up to eight hundred thousand dollars, one up to two hundred thousand dollars that could potentially go to that. That would be one million. Potentially, you could have up to one million dollars of free money. I can tell you already, the part of money with two hundred thousand, it's extremely rare to get it, because there's not much in there. So we're looking at potentially eight hundred thousand. The bad news is, it's eight hundred thousand dollars until June. After June, they've already told me, they haven't announced this to anybody, but DEQ has told me they're gonna switch the way they do it, and at that point, the amount of true forgiveness might be a little less than it has been. So for the AMI, the meters portion, my preference, if we can, is to try to move fast enough so that the loan gets approved by the OWRB by June. That would maximize the chances of getting the eight hundred thousand dollars. Okay, so we're talking maybe the one million, but let's assume it's eight hundred, because it's really rare to give the full million. So we're talking at potentially eight hundred thousand dollars forgiven, plus five hundred thousand dollars. The five hundred thousand dollars could be borrowed over, you know, up to fifteen years. So that, you know, that is not, five hundred thousand dollars over fifteen years is not much of a bump at all. Before I forget, before I mention the other two loans, I do want to mention that your existing loan with the water board will mature in twenty thirty. One thing we can always do is wrap some of these loans around, so that the repayment on these new loans is lower until twenty thirty, and then bumps up that way. Oh, you don't stick the chalk. So that's, so automated meters, that's the one where I would say, let's just move very fast if we can. Lead service line replacement, I was just talking to DEQ over the past two weeks, actually talked to them about it today as well. DEQ has not yet done loans that are for lead service line or galvanized line replacement. I'm working with them on what's gonna be their first one, and you might be the second one. I'm working on others. So this is something, it's new to them, but frankly, they're holding my hand, I'm holding their hand. And what they have told me is, again, the magic June, right? If we get this one approved by June, it would be a hundred percent forgiven. Except for my fee, which would not be paid through the loan, and the fee would be two and a half percent of whatever the amount is. And also, there's an application fee to the water board of five hundred bucks that would not be reimbursed. So, and one thing I want to tell you, because I was the manager over that area for the last few years, I can tell you that the loan application, it really needs to be paid upfront, but what I like to do is I like to pay it toward the end of the review, if they know there's still money available. For example, if you want to go after some free money, and if you don't give the free money, you don't do the deal, then we're just not gonna, we're just not gonna pay the application if it's clear that the money's no longer there. Just to save you a little bit. Okay, so the lead service line replacement is another one where we would want to move fast to maximize the savings. Now, I'm not saying there will not be any free money in July, because there will be, but they might decide to make it, there's gonna be a match required, and that match might be very, very high. And another thing to keep in mind is, there are a lot of people waiting in line for this, for this money. I'm currently working with fourteen entities, and it's gonna be a race to try to get there. There's not that much money left in the pot for this year. So again, the faster we move, the better our chances. Water distribution, we're looking about six hundred thousand dollars. That would likely be a third type of project, unless those lines are on ground that has been disturbed before. Are we talking like looping lines, or just talking about new lines, or?
New lines.
Okay, so there's a third, there's a third product that would probably be beneficial for you. And that's the one that has flexibility, that you could potentially add some of the sewer stuff in there. Have you talked to the water board about emergency money? Do they have emergency grants?
I'm in discussions with them right now.
Who, who are you talking to? You talking to Jerry, or?
Gretchen.
Gretchen, okay. I hired Gretchen. I love her. She's great. Well, I hired Jerry as well. So yeah, talk to her. There's a little bit of grant money out there. There's not much. And timing, you just need to time it just right. They receive some interest money every once in a while, and you want to snatch it right then. So it's great that you're talking to her. Another thing we could do that's very rarely done, but I believe there's still a way to do it. If, you know, this being an emergency, you could potentially get a local loan, get a bank loan with the right paperwork upfront, so that OWRB loan would reimburse your expenses. So you get a bank loan at a pretty high interest rate, but make sure there's no early payoff fee, right? And then you come in and reimburse it with an OWRB loan. If we were to do that, I would still want to make sure that you, that you meet all the requirements, because if the requirements of the future OWRB loan are not met, the reconstruction, then you can't get it. But there's an opportunity there, and since David had a, had mentioned five million dollars, which gives us a little bit of a cushion, we could potentially tack on some of the sewer stuff in there.
Okay.
So I feel like I've babbled. Again, we're talking potentially three different loans, but luckily, the contracts are written with an S, so it could be, it could be more, it could be less. Three different loan programs, two with free money, one without.
The lead service or galvanized replacement does not include mains, does it?
Service lines, and also the lines from the meter to the thing. If you have mains, I believe you probably could tack it on to the quote-unquote loan, but you'd have to repay that. It would have to be repaid. So, you know, we could add it to it, but that wouldn't be free money. Do you have?
No, we don't have any lead. And there's no lead service line, but I think there's seventy-six or seventy-three or something galvanized service lines. So there's not a big number.
But the galvanized, that in the past, might have had some lead.
We have no way to know, so they said.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I talked to Michael about that. Yeah, so yes, the mains, and I don't, you know, the federal government, you never know exactly. The mains, they will not cover the mains. But again, it's line replacement, so a regular OWRB loan would work for line replacement. Because this would be on land that has already been disturbed, you could probably tack it on to, frankly, the automated meter project, maybe. I would tack it on to the lead service line, with the understanding that that's not a service line, but they have to repay. And if that doesn't work for the OWRB, we could actually make it a fourth loan. That would save you money. We could get there when we get there. My one concern about line replacement is that even though it's beneath ground that has been disturbed, it's still a disturbance of ground, so there's still gonna be some kind of environmental review. On the automated meters, there'll be a lot less review, and because we want to beat the clock on that, I would just keep the meters and the SCADA alone.
And the SCADA, we handled with the REAP grant.
Okay, so yeah, okay, that's right. So that means, so you said the total of one point three million, we're probably looking a little bit less then, because that included SCADA. And again, I don't have final numbers, but bottom line, on that one, we would apply for, you know, whatever we think, but keep it strictly to meters. I don't remember if there was anything else. I think it was just meters.
Yeah, because, yeah.
Keep it to that, just that way, there's no ground disturbed. That way, the environmental process can go very, very fast. That is typically one of the big sticking points, is environmental review. Engineering review as well, but I've had a lot of luck with automated meter projects. I want to say, one of my loans hit a record. I haven't told you this, but on meters, we had a tech memo that was submitted. So typically, it's an engineering report, but a technical memo is a lot more simple. Automated meters, it's a lot simpler. We had a tech memo that was submitted. I submitted it the day before Thanksgiving. Four business days later, they approved it. They approved it. Not that they asked questions, but they approved it. And they will be the first one to tell you. An engineering report comes in. I have forty-five days to review it. And a lot of times, on day forty-four, they'll get to the engineer and say, hey, there's this tiny little bit, tiny little thing here you need to change. The engineer changes it. The engineer is busy with a lot of stuff, so chances are, they don't turn it right away. Well, they make the chance, submit it back to the engineer at DEQ. Guess what? They have forty-five days to review it again. Okay, so I don't know if it's a record, but the one we submitted for northeast, somewhere in northeast Oklahoma, four business days. So who knows? Maybe we're gonna beat that record. I mean, that's just, the engineer and I read the email three times, because we thought, this is not possible. If they make a mistake. I know, approve it for business day. Now, that's the tech memo. After that, there's plans and specs, which can be very time-consuming for the engineer, and rarely gets reviewed very quickly. But still.
Unheard of.
And once the engineer report is ready, you can get the environmental going, you can have what they call CAPDEV, which means capacity development. You might have done one a couple of years ago, but I don't think so. It's the DEQ coming in and looking at how you run your books, and how you run your system, and just kind of giving you suggestions on maybe how to improve it. You might have to, you know, the city might have to do some kind of resolution, just like you did one with the grants, just to see, are you covered in case of an issue. You know, it's three hours of your time that you'll never get back, and just based on what I see, I have got a feeling that they wouldn't have very many findings, and it can be done very quickly. But again, that process can start as soon as the tech memo is done. And Michael Taylor and I used to be colleagues. I mean, he was a DEQ when I was with the water board, so. Do you have any questions?
No, but I do have to apologize too. I forgot to ask you to give your name and business and everything, so Amanda could make it a part of the report. So if you could do that now and then.
Charles Decune, Baker Group. I had been indirectly introduced by David, so, but I'd be happy to repeat everything.
I don't like making mistakes. So, Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have one thing, just to refocus what we're doing here. This item is approving actions that you all will take later as the PWA. The action in PWA is just the first step in a long process. It's authorizing the filing of just the applications for loans. If there are funds available and the loans are granted, then we come back and do another final authorization, accepting them. So this is just step one, and it's not incurring any financial obligations of the city to move forward the applications.
Except perhaps the application fee of two hundred, two hundred fifty to five hundred, depending on which loan.
Yeah, except for that part of it. It's not actually taking out the loan. That part comes at a later step. So just being clear on where we are in the process. And as Charles said, yes, we have to move quickly, so authorizing the applications now gives us a shot at making those June award deadlines.
So we do need to make a motion on this?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution of City of Perkins, Oklahoma, known as the city, approving action taken by the Perkins Public Works Authority, including any floor amendments that may be made thereto, authorizing the increase issuance, sale, and delivery of promissory note notes, and one or more series of authority to the Oklahoma Resource Board, and the total aggregate principal amount of not exceed five million dollars, ratifying and confirming a lease agreement as amended pertaining to this certain water sanitary and refuse system, and containing other provisions related thereto.
My second it.
No, you got it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Do we have a number assigned to that yet?
We do. It's thirty-six, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you so much, sir.
Sure.
Number thirteen, consideration discussion and possible action to approve ordinance five-one-five and ordinance of the City of Perkins, Oklahoma, regulating garage sales, defining garage sales, limiting the duration of garage sales, establishing sign regulations, providing for enforcement and penalties, and providing for severability and declaring an emergency.
This came about because of a perpetual or ongoing or never-to-end sale. And in reviewing the existing code, there wasn't a timeframe. So I felt that we needed a timeframe that we can enforce that's reasonable. And I think it's written very reasonably.
I think this will fall under our code enforcement officer, as part of his.
Theoretically, yes.
Okay.
Maybe the city manager, you never know.
Same thing.
Yeah, same thing.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number five-one-five.
Second that one.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number fourteen, consideration discussion and possible action on declaring an emergency on ordinance five-one-five.
Make a motion to declare an emergency on ordinance five-one-five.
David?
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Veronica?
Number fifteen, consideration discussion and possible action to surplus nineteen-seventy-nine Ford F-six-hundred VIN number ending in zero-six-nine-zero, and set value at eight thousand dollars.
This is to get rid of, it was a fire vehicle, and then it was used at Public Works, and parts are getting harder to come by, and there's issues with it. And set the value, and then we'll take bids, I'll take bids if we get any. We'll sell it based on that value, and if we don't, then we'll put it on auction.
Sounds vintage.
It's vintage. I don't know that I like that word, vintage, for nineteen-seventy-nine, but it's getting older.
That's not aging anymore, is it?
Yes.
It could be a little.
It's in its prime.
I feel that you just got offended.
I feel like nineteen-sixty-eight model, I'm an antique. I make a motion to surplus the nineteen-seventy-nine Ford F-six-hundred VIN number ending in I make a motion uh to surplus the nineteen-seventy-nine Ford F-six-hundred VIN number ending in zero-six-nine-zero, and set a value at eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Uh, City of Perkins regular meeting is now adjourned. Anybody flinch?
What are you doing?
Have to try harder.
It's already as dense in it.
Well, no comment.
First day.
That was the first time you hit it.
Okay, moving back along. Perkins Public Works Authority regular meeting Tuesday, December ninth, twenty-twenty-five. Call the order, real call, establish a quorum, Amanda?
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Consideration and action on consent agenda. Mr. Schuss?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
A second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Pass on three-four, consideration discussion and possible action to approve resolution thirty-four twenty-twenty-five, a resolution amending solid waste collection fees. Rachel?
Well, you know, we're getting rid of the pennies, so. Everything, everything else billing-wise, either is a round number, or it can be handled internally with the utility bills. So he pays cash for utility bill, it's, bill is, I don't know, ninety-nine cents, they'll have a penny on their account. If they're a little bit short, we'll just rule for example, so that's easy to handle. The only thing that we could come up with that actually involved pennies are the special orange trash bags that people purchase, so they can put them out additionally with their polycard and get picked up. The single bag was a dollar eighty-eight, and five bags was eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. So the only change on the resolution is to make the single bag a dollar ninety, and the five bags eight dollars and sixty cents. Zero or a five number.
Okay. Mr. Schuss, anybody, it's pretty simple, not costing a lot. Uh, I make a motion to approve resolution thirty-four dash twenty-twenty-five, a resolution amending solid waste collection fees.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number five, consideration discussion and possible action to approve Maguire Iron Contractor Pay application, number two, in the amount of three hundred ninety-eight thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and ten cents, funded by the Oklahoma Water Resource Board American Rescue Plan Act funds, awarded for the Joint Iowa Tribe of Oklahoma and the City of Perkins Water Tower Project to acknowledge utilizing ITO funds in the amount of a hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty-five cents, and to approve the dispersment request, number one, for ARPA funds awarded to the City of Perkins in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty-five cents.
This is the same thing, footing and the steel.
Make a motion to approve Maguire Iron Contract Pay application, number two, in the amount of three hundred ninety-eight thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and ten cents, funded by the Oklahoma Water Resource Board American Rescue Plan Act funds, awarded for the Joint Iowa Tribe of Oklahoma and City of Perkins Water Tower Project, to acknowledge utilizing ITO funds in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty-five cents, and to approve dispersment request, number one, for ARPA funds awarded to the City of Perkins in the amount of one, one hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty-five cents.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Very good, Justin, for reading all that.
I was taking a breath for you. Did you, did you, all that stuff from Maguire Iron, and all the stuff, the parts that are in South Dakota, and how heavy everything is? How much it weighs, and then you're like, oh my Atlanta, you're gonna have a fleet of trucks coming in here.
Catch on fire.
Okay, I just thought it was interesting. Number six, consideration discussion and possible action to approve dispersment request, number three, for Cowan Engineering invoice one-zero-three-six-four in the amount of one thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars, funded by the Oklahoma Water Resources Board American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded to the City of Perkins and the Joint Iowa Tribe of Oklahoma and the City of Perkins Sewer Lift Station Project.
Construction administration for the engineering.
Figured I could just memorize this stuff.
Uh, I make a motion to approve dispersment request, number three, for Cowan Engineering in the amount of one thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars, funded by the Oklahoma Water Resources Rescue Plan Act, awarded to the City of Perkins and the joint project with the Iowa Tribe of Oklahoma Sewer Lift Station Project.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Kinda skipped some words. Number seven, consideration discussion and possible action to approve resolution thirty-three twenty-twenty-five, a joint resolution. I'm sorry. Bying between the city commission, the City of Perkins, the Perkins Industrial Development Authority, and the Perkins Public Works Authority adopting grants management policy. It was my sister. Couldn't touch it, go ahead, somebody. Rachel?
Uh, the same, same as discussed in city commission.
Make a motion to approve resolution thirty-three dash twenty-twenty-five.
A second, oh, go ahead, you can have it, Jason.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica? Yes.
Number eight, uh, consideration discussion and possible action to approve revised Perkins Public Works Authority purchasing policy.
Same as in city commission, this is the second of three times, so. We're doing it again for PIDE.
Oh, wait, no, we're not doing that.
Oh, we're not?
No, we're doing the grants thing for PIDE, right?
Never mind, this is two of two, you're done after this.
Make a motion to approve revised Perkins Public Works Authority purchase policy.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Does that mean I have to sign it six times? Stamp this in. Number nine, oh my Atlanta. Consideration discussion and possible action with respect to resolution of the Perkins Public Works Authority, known as the borrower, to include any floor amendments that may be made thereto, authorizing and approving a loan application with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, for financial assistance through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, loan program or other financial assistance, or loan proceeds, with loan proceeds being for the purpose of financing certain drinking water system improvements, authorizing and approving the hiring of professionals, and execution of any requisite agreements, all of which designate the hiring of Floyd and Driver, P L L C, Norman, Oklahoma, as bond counsel, and the engagement of the Baker Group, L P, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, as financial advisor to the borrower with regards to said loan, authorizing the hiring of local counsel, and containing other provisions related thereto.
So now that you have your PWA hats on, this is the action approving, uh, applying for the loans that we discussed in the city commission meeting, uh, engaging Baker Group as financial advisor and our firm's bond counsel, and letting us move forward.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, number nine, as read by the mayor.
That's good. Awesome.
I'll let it slide.
Wait for the denial.
No, for the whole thing.
Just remember.
Oh my gosh, I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am. That was smooth.
The Perkins Public Works Authority regular meeting Tuesday, December ninth is adjourned.
I would like to make an off-the-record announcement that everybody needs to please make sure your phones are turned on silent. You will be f'ed for and out.
With the watch.
It was a watch.
The phones and the watch, that's why I got kicked out of the courtroom, was because of somebody else's watch.
Atlanta. At least it didn't play Santa Baby or something like that.
I wish it would have.
Justin, bam!
He's trained for it.
He's trained, at least they weren't silver bracelets. Okay, Perkins, oh my lord, we worked too hard. Perkins Industrial Development Authority Notice of Special Meeting and Agenda. Rock, call the order, real call, and establish a quorum, please, Amanda?
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Renee?
Rhonda?
Yes.
Thanks for being here, Rhonda.
I got your back.
All right, number two, consideration discussion and possible action to approve resolution thirty-three twenty-twenty-five, a joint resolution by and between the city commission of the City of Perkins, the Perkins Industrial Development Authority, and the Perkins Public Works Authority adopting a grants management policy.
Same, three of three.
Make a motion to approve resolution thirty-three dash twenty-twenty-five.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
So the Perkins Industrial Development Authority is now adjourned. All three means adjourned, adjourned. Ju- just do it. You seen my picture?
I did. I didn't read it.
Well, they wrote one for me, I didn't like it.
I didn't like it, so I had to rewrite myself.
Write it myself.
One of the reasons I didn't like it is I really wanted.
It's just the government, do not.
So, this, I wrote it actually.
Oh, never mind, I'll see if.
So that's, that's why. I have a few things.
So they don't necessarily have to read it through?
I gotta find the state, the only ones that state. Amanda, you want one where black inked her?
Whatever makes you happy.